It's now seven P M. Ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the in-person and virtual regular meeting of City Council, scheduled for today, Monday, April twenty first at seven P M. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you be kind enough to call the roll for us today?
Councilwoman Ashafi.
Present.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Council Pro Tem Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. We have a forum. Members of council, you have had an opportunity to review the agenda. Chair, we're entertaining a motion on today's agenda.
I move to approve. I move to approve the agenda for city council meeting.
So we had, we had, we had the motion from Councilwoman Manica, seconded by Councilwoman Ashafi. Questions, concerns, dissent? Here we go. Now I'll call for the roll on the approval of the minutes for the in-person and virtual workshop meeting for April seventh, twenty twenty five.
Councilman.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
What was that? Do we have something we have to add here?
For the minutes?
Oh, yeah.
This, this is for, we just approved in the minutes.
Okay.
No agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hold on. Hold on just one second. Ladies and gentlemen, I skipped right over item three and went straight to the minutes. My apologies. We are approving the agenda for today. We had a motion from Councilwoman Manica to approve the agenda. We had a second from Councilwoman Ashafi to approve the agenda. On the note, point of order, on the note of making that motion for a public hearing, that can be done at any point.
Okay.
During our regularly scheduled meeting. All we need is confirmation from the clerk with dates that are appropriate to meet our obligation as far as our public notices. So again, we had a motion on the floor for the approval of the agenda made by. So we just had a recommendation from Mr. Bostick to go down to item. If we go down to item eight, we can add, we can make A, A, the resolution to retain Jacob and Dimer P C for the matter of Woolworth Manchester LLC versus City Highland Park, and A B could be the setting of the public hearing. So budget. Hearing. Item B and possibly item C for the water rate public hearing.
Okay, so I rescind my motion to make a new, I'm sorry. I'll let you rescind your support.
So Ms. Manica has rescinded her motion for the approval of the agenda as it stands. Mr. Ashafi, your support still remains or is rescinded?
Is she rescinding?
She did.
Okay, then I will send this one.
So okay, now the floor is open.
I make a new motion. My new motion is I move to approve the agenda for Monday, April twenty first, two thousand and twenty-five city council meetings to include eight, B and C. B, reading, setting the budget hearing.
The budget public.
Budget public hearing. And C, setting the water public hearing.
Water rate, got you.
I'm sorry, water rate public hearing.
So do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, both for May fifth.
Is that applicable date?
May fifth. Let me just confirm with the clerk. Clerk is telling me that it'll work as far as dates go. Yes, Madam Pro Tem. So I'm sorry, your motion is, let me finish your motion. So your motion would be for the amendment of the budget to include under legal, item B, budget public hearing, and C, water public hearing, both for May fifth, twenty twenty five.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. And Mr. Ashafi, is your support still?
Yes.
Remaining with that? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica for the approval of tonight's agenda, amending the agenda to include a budget public hearing and a water public hearing under the section of legal. It will be item B and C for May fifth. That was supported by Councilwoman Ashafi. Questions, concerns, or dissent?
What?
Madam Pro Tem.
Item five on the agenda of the closed session.
Yes.
It says, except to discuss some of the studies regarding Woolworth Manchester Company LLC and Woolworth Highland Park LLC versus City Highland Park. But on the actual revolution, you only have the Woolworth Manchester LLC.
Are those differences different some kind of way?
I think those names are pulled off one of the pleadings. Yeah, I believe the resolution was pulled off that is a I think there may be, the case number is correct, wind sugar course correct. I think there are two two plaintiffs and press. Okay, counsel to answer that question, I guess. Yes, it's the same case, it's the same case number. The same court.
So the case number is correct or refer to the part. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for the approval of the agenda. Any additional questions, concerns, or dissent? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on the approval of the agenda?
Councilwoman Ashafi.
Yes, to approve the agenda.
Councilwoman Manica, correction, Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. The agenda is approved. Now moving on to item four, this is the approval of the proposed minutes for the in-person and virtual workshop meeting on April seventh, twenty twenty five. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the proposed minutes for the in-person and virtual, virtual workshop meeting, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Chair offers support. Questions, concerns, or dissent? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ashafi.
Yes, for the workshop.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the in-person and virtual regular meeting, April seventh, twenty twenty five. This is the approval of the proposed minutes for that meeting. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to improve, to approve the proposed minutes for in-person and virtual regular meeting, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Chair offers support. Questions, concerns, or dissent? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Because ladies and gentlemen, the audience, this is the section of our meeting every week where we allocate time for the mayor to speak before council and to address the public. Madam Mayor, if you'd be kind enough to take the podium.
This way. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm not going to be before you long. I had an opportunity to, to go to Washington, D.C. and meet with over fifty African-American mayors in the, across the state. And at that conference, it was very enlightening. I was very enlightened. I was enlightened because we all share the same problems. We share water problems, infrastructure, numerous problems. But the main thing that I brought back was there's a housing shortage across this country. And they're all in African-American communities. And so when we looking at the numbers and the statistics and we think about who and where these are placed, we have an issue that we have to solve here. So severely inadequate housing or an lack of in the black community is severely inadequate, two point one, moderately inadequate, which is five point seven, which is seven point eight of the share of U.S. households in adequate housing in twenty twenty-three by race and ethnicity. We have the hires. The highest is seven point eight. So with that being said, we have to do a lot of community development in order to make that happen and change the numbers. And I want to change the numbers here. So I'm bringing this information so that we can look at statistics versus just having conversations. These statistics are very important. They're very important to the livelihoods of the people that live here and the ones that need to live here. So that was a very good conversation. The other conversation that we had was we need to support each other. And so the African-American mayors across this country, some somewhat large, large communities, somewhat very small, are putting together a coalition of mayors to start supporting other communities and making sure that we're all known that we're here and we're going to do what we need to do to change our communities. So that was good. I brought this information. I wanted to share that. The other thing I had real quick was sharing information on Facebook, and I talk about this all the time because most of it is fake. It's not true. Uh, there's a lot of fake news out here. And one what the other day was about a police officer that is not, that was supposed to went missing in Highland Park and her baby was left in a car. Before you start sharing those things, please, please do research. That is not correct. It is something that went across the country, different places, different faces, used to panic the community. Last time, I think a baby was born, found in a dumpster. That did not happen in Highland Park, Michigan. That did not happen at all. So please start asking people who post things on Facebook for their evidence. And if they can't provide evidence, please don't share it. It's not factual. We have a lot of that going around and it's got to stop. It's creating panic in this city, especially when it's not true. So that's all I have today, and I'm hoping you guys show up next month for my coffee and conversation. I need everybody to come and get the information. I need everybody to come and get factual information. Not the lies being spread on Facebook, not about my police, not about my water department, not about the people in this city. Come get factual information. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. So ladies and gentlemen, let me get my timer set. Let me get my timer set because now we're going to set time aside for public comments on the agenda items. Now, we have a very brief agenda tonight, praise God. There are two tabled items that fall under C E D. And we're going to do something from now on. I'm going to make sure that the C E D director has an opportunity to address the items related to his department. He does not, he has not in the past had an opportunity to create a framework to, for council to have a clear understanding of what's coming in front of us. Quite often, we have just left him out of the conversation, and that's going to change. These property dispositions are of the highest priority, as the mayor pointed out. So we have two tabled items. It's a resolution to sell the vacant commercial lot at one, two, five, three, five, Hamilton. And the resolutions to sell three vacant residential lots at sixty-nine, seventy-three, and seventy-nine Kendall. We have a resolution to accept the generous donations that came to us in the form of water during the crisis. We also have item eight, which is the legal resolution to retain council to represent us in this water lawsuit and public hearing. If there are individuals that would like to speak on agenda items, you can line up at the podium. Otherwise, we'll go right into our council meeting. And this is what I would do for you. I'm going to wait until you state your name. Once you state your name, I'll start the timer for you. And I'm going to give you two minutes, which in Highland Park is two minutes and thirty seconds typically. And I would try not to interrupt you if I can, but if you see me waving a little bit, I'm trying to, trying to get you off the ledge. Okay, so go ahead, ma'am, would you please?
My name is Doris Mitchell. I'm the Administrative Assistant for Greater Philadelphia, Tabernacle Seventy-four Kendall, Highland Park, Michigan. I'm coming before you. Good evening, everybody. We would like to change the position on purchasing three lots to just purchasing one lot, sixty-nine Kendall. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, sir. My name is Pastor Patrick Franklin. I'm the Pastor of Healing Spring Baptist Church. I'm here tonight regarding the property located at twelve, five, thirty-five, Hamilton. Request and proposal to purchase this property, fence it as a parking lot. This is the third meeting that I've attended and requesting approval from this council to purchase this adjacent property. In the past fifteen years, we've helped to maintain this property by keeping it the lawn mowed and keeping the property on multiple occasions. And I watched other ministries get approvals for the same purchase request that I'm making tonight. And we were tabled to the night. I provided details of the plan, of what we plan to do with the property, which is to fence it and to pave it as additional parking. We want to purchase this additional parking due to a growing accommodative, growing congregation. And bike lanes, as you know, was added on the Hamilton. It kind of took away some of the street parking that we had become accustomed to. And, you know, as you know, our church has been in this community over sixty-five years. We're vested interests. We're here. We've been here for years. We're pillar in this community since the nineteen sixties. We're voting precinct for the city of Highland Park. You know, we, we're, we're, we're and we ensure that our properties are properly maintained. You know, we're not a nuisance. We just humbly come before this council today requesting approval for the purchase of a commercial lot at twelve, five, thirty-five, Hamilton. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, seeing no other bodies moving towards the podium, we're going to go right into our regular meeting. Oh. This is an agenda item?
I believe so.
Yes, ma'am, what?
Good evening, everybody. Happy Monday. My name is Famika Roberts, and I am the Vice President of this Highland Park School District School Board out here. And I would like to say hello, good evening to everyone. Thank you for being here. Thank you for allowing us to come here. I don't know the pastor there. And please forgive me, but I hope that you all would definitely consider that, you know, in support of him getting those lots, especially if he's going to pave it, beautify it. You know, because his congregation is growing. You know, I'm up here. In addition to that, Madam Mayor made a statement about going to her conference and bringing back how we all share the commonality of the, the housing, you know, shortage and everything, and how we need to come together and think of ways to to bring that here. I'm in support of that as well with the school district, and I know there's a few of us here this evening that is in support of growing this educational system out here, which means more families and everything. And so I just want to say that I would appreciate, would appreciate that. I wasn't even here for that. I just wanted to introduce myself and let everybody know who I was and how I'm interested in becoming more active out here. I'm also part of the CEDAC for District Two Precinct Four, so y'all will be seeing me if you're in that district.
I gotta, I gotta stop you because it was supposed to be an agenda item.
Well, I thought it was because he, it was.
So you did, you did reference the church.
Okay. And then the family stuff. That's it. Thank you so much.
But I want you to know that if you wanted to come back and you wanted to share additionally at the end of our agenda.
Yes.
After, before council affairs or citizens participation, anything else that you wanted to share with us, you come back up and get two minutes.
Thank you, but that was it. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We, we want to try and keep it, we don't have a parliamentarian. That was my first order of business as City Council President. It was voted down. I'm very familiar with the parliamentary process, which is why I thought it was extremely important to make sure that we had a parliamentarian. It was voted down. So now I have to function as council president and parliamentarian at the same time, which sometimes can be a little bit cumbersome. So if I don't, now that I don't see anyone else coming to the podium, we'll go ahead and move into our agenda, madam. Ms. Manica.
I move to go into closed session.
So moving on to item four for closed section, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to move into closed section. I will, the Ms. Martin has seconded that motion, questions, concerns, dissent, or we just call for the vote? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call for the roll on item four to go into closed session? So, but let me just read the closed session is to discuss the settlement strategy regarding the Woolworth Manchester Company LLC and the Woolworth Highland Park LLC versus the city of Highland Park as this relates to unpaid water usage. So go ahead and call the roll on that if you would.
Councilwoman Ashafi.
Yes, to go into closed session.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries at seven twenty. We will adjourn and go into closed session. Ladies and gentlemen, we will be back shortly. Ladies and gentlemen, we will be back shortly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is the best way?
Within state law. That has a rate. I'm a street. They made. On a local. On a local. So that's amazing. That's their money that they think. What? Good thing. You don't have. I'm ready. So I. Damon. We have. But I'm. Say. Each party come down. Eventually. But eventually. Y'all have to rely on. It's kind of. A residential. Not normal. You have. I don't. Because it can open it up. And that's. If it's. It's, it's, it's made. From Donna. Hope. Hopefully. It's residential.
So. It's actually.
I got sent.
I said. So there's. Ten hour. And that was what you get tonight.
But it still may be. Well, we have our first. Thing. Building a bike. Our own.
Voting. We will.
You. Good. Very. What's that? Oh. Definitely. Well, I ask him. Wait, that's. Yeah. Hamilton says. That we. Trust. The first time. It's. Future. Part. She. As. Maybe well. To say. Rezoned. That's real.
Yes, ma'am.
Facebook. Later. By the way. He was. He said. So. Take. That's all better for our. That's all. So he. So now. So now you gotta go to the church. Because if you're volatile. I'm in church. But that's. But when she got my face. Because people like to talk about. It's great. You so fun. But does that. Won't say a word. I see. There's a lot of. A lot of them. I know. I know. When you. It's just two thousand eighteen. I think. This is our. And look. I would. Right. She said. I have. This. I see. So they. Yes, sir. I suppose. Still. She said. She said her. It's getting better. But every day. She knows very few. Like. Not that. Yeah. So I don't like. I had. Looking at. I go. Back. Great.
So.
I see your face. How many? Right. That's right. But it's. It don't make sense. Actually. I don't. Just. Uh. Okay. I. I'm.
She.
I'm trouble. Separate. That's not. That's not. So. It's. Richie. I. I'm. Choice. Yeah. It's.
Yeah.
He said. You have a feeling to. Plan. So. Tony, you're never. Never. Why? So. Wow. Yeah. And I think. Yeah. Yeah. That's my dad. You know. I just. Like. Like. Oh. I would. Like. I don't. I don't. So. No. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I. Ah. Nah. 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 It's like. My. You. And. And. Yeah. And. Yeah. Okay. I'm. 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 So. It's. Sorry. That's. So. Very. I'm. 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 They. I'm. So. We're. I'm. I'm. Yeah. There's. So. Everything. You have. About that. That. That's. No. Yeah.
That's.
No. No. That's. I.
Many things.
Let me. You.
Are you looking?
That's why. Right. Dying. Trying. Yeah. Yeah. I don't like. Not very good. Okay. You know. That's. Yeah. Exactly. You guys. Talk about. This.
Or. Well, the. Question. They bring it back.
Yeah. Yeah. And. What is my? Yeah. I'm. Sorry. Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
You know. So.
Well, that's the only person you see.
Oh, Jamil, you know, I see you beautiful. Hi, Jamil. How you doing beautiful? Right. Oh, yeah. Yeah. We talk on a regular basis. What you talking about? Okay. Fair enough.
You. Look, you better be glad I ain't whip. And maybe it's.
Watch this stuff, Jamil.
I can't. I'm. He was. Three. Whoa. I was. Church. See. All out. See. I'm. I didn't. I didn't. No. I took this. Yeah. Huh? I just say it. Say hey. I say no, no. Say hey. But not. No.
Now even my cousin says have a ball. Double. Double sided.
Thank you.
It is seven fifty and the chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting for tonight, Monday, April twenty first.
Motion to reconvene.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilman O'Shafi, seconded by. Councilwoman Manica, roll call vote autos in favor.
Aye.
Aye, meeting is reconvened at seven fifty one P M. Moving on to item. Six, tabled items, we're starting with item A, a resolution to sell the vacant commercial lot at one two five three five Hamilton Avenue. This item has been tabled. I would entertain a motion to bring the item back from the table.
I move to bring. Sorry, give me a chance to read it. I move to bring that. The resolutions to sell the vacant commercial lot. At one two five three five Hamilton Avenue to the commercial property owner of one two. Six four seven Hamilton Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion to bring the tabled item back, resolution to sell the vacant commercial lot at one two five three five Hamilton Avenue. To the commercial property owner of one two six four seven Hamilton Avenue. Back off the table, made by Councilwoman Manica, seconded by Councilwoman Martin. Questions, concerns, dissent?
You go first.
Yes, ma'am.
We'd like to bring the C D director to the podium, please, if that's possible.
Yes, ma'am, but we, so we had his motion on the floor.
Okay, well, that's our question. Our questions are to the C E D director.
Okay, and then, so thank you for that, and as a matter of procedure, yes, ma'am, as a matter of procedure. Moving forward, members of council, every time there is an issue related to property sales. I'm going to defer to the C E D director so that he can give us a proper framework of what's actually taking place, and this may alleviate. Some of those questions, concerns, or frustrations related to property sales. Director Clyburn, if you would, the floor is yours.
Good evening, council residents. Thank you for the time.
Wait a minute, hold on, hold on, hold on. We need to vote to take it off the table, and then we can discuss it openly. We just, we have taken a roll call. So would you call the roll, please, on taking the, uh, remove, bring the item back from the table?
Councilwoman O'Shafi?
Yes, to bring it back from the table.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, now the measure is up for a motion for approval, so could we also have? If there are members who would like to make a motion for the approval of this item, if we have that motion right now, then we can turn it over to Director Clyburn to address.
Make a motion for what?
So now, now we need to get.
I want to make a motion for the approval. Of the resolution to sell the vacant commercial lot at one two five three five Hamilton Avenue to a commercial property owner. Of one two six four seven Hamilton Avenue, Hilling Springs, Missionary Baptist Church.
Support. Chair offers support, the motion is back on the floor, this is the resolution to sell the vacant commercial lot at one two five three five Hamilton. Director Clyburn, the floor is yours.
All right. So this motion has been before the council, it was tabled. Hillen Springs has been interested in this for some time now. So, C E D department feel like we should move forward with it. In your packet, it's attached as a resolution, and the resolution references the ordinance which can be, which governs property sales, vacant lots. And. From the resolution and the ordinance, Hillen Springs, check all the boxes. Also in the packet. Is the application. Which was signed off by the water department, treasurer, legal department, and the C E D department. Which says that there is no code enforcement violations, and they don't owe any debtness to the city. So that's all signed on, off on. Also in the packet is, I offer the purchase agreement. Which is directly from the ordinance, which outlines everything that the property owner must do by ordinance. And assigned and dated by. The representative from Hillen Springs. Also in the packet is. A developer plan, a notarized development plan. Which talks about exactly what. The purchaser is looking to do with the property, so it is signed and notarized. Also in the packet is a pay receipt for the application. Driver's license. Also what I've included is actually a diagram of the properties and what, what it looks like. So they own one two six, one two six four seven and one two six zero one. Across the street, but adjacent is one two five three five, which they are asking for parking, additional parking and green space. One of the reasons why we found this to, to be, um, fine, I know there's some issues about parking lots on Hamilton, but. We are in the process of planning, and we're looking at a commercial, a commercial entertainment district on Hamilton. More, more so north, then we got industrial, and there's some other plans, so we are planning it out, so we're not looking at parking lots up and down Hamilton. This area here, if you know, two doors down, it's, so is that vacant lot, another vacant lot than the Met Clinic? So you got the Met Clinic, you got the church, and across the street is the funeral home. Some days, parking is very tough. Um, you know, the Met Clinic alone parks up and down the streets. Um, the church has been requesting additional parking for some time, so we feel like. We can move forward with this. The next sheet just shows, um, the property area that's without highlighted. So you see, um, the exact property borders. The real estate summary shows, um, what the, what the, where Hillen Spring owns. We have the domestic nonprofit corporation articles of the corporation. And pictures of what Hillen Springs is looking to do. So I'll entertain questions.
Um, Ms. Manica, if you would.
So here's the questions that seem to be on the table for city councils. And that one is, you're absolutely right, we was concerned with parking. On Hamilton being a commercial area, and that we are trying to. Bring that type of business into the city. To generate revenue. I'm asking C D. Was there any other options for parking, maybe going down the street versus on Hamilton? Did we own any property? Going down the street next to the church? That could have been sold to them versus being on Hamilton? That's the first question.
So we did look at that, and we look at, that may be more suited for residential build because they are vacant blocks, so we looking to build and bring in housing. I said. You're talking about Leslie and Sturtevant, right? Both of those streets are ripe for residential. So that was, and you're saying to considerate, so in planning, Hamilton and our different target areas, that, that fits more of the, um, plan.
Mr. O'Shafi, I saw your hand first, Ms. Madam Proton, I saw you as well.
Is it on me, Council President?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay, um. The land behind the church, oh, uh, across the alley, who owns that land?
You couldn't, so from the diagram, so tell me what you're talking about.
Okay, so there's land that I parked on across the alley of the church, when we had a town hall meeting there not too long ago. On the side. Okay, not, not on Hamilton, on the other side of the church, alley running down, and it's laying on that side.
Is it all Hamilton?
No, no, on the other side of the church. So if you're facing the church.
Are you talking about Upstirred bit, or are you talking about Leslie?
Okay, so there's an alley running.
I see the alley running right behind.
They're laying on the other side of the alley, who owns that?
I could take a look and let you know.
Okay, okay. See, my concern. My concern again is parking lots. Where does it end? I mean, wh- where revenue are we going to generate from a parking lot on Hamilton?
That's a question?
No.
Okay, I'm one voice for you finish.
How is that going to help us? Okay, I, 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 I got no problem with helping people get land for parking. But everybody who's asked us for land for parking, they were off a beaten path, off to the side, out of the way. Not in the way of, of development, and then you're selling this land of, for less than market value. This is less than market value for this particular piece of land.
Fair market value by the assessor. The assessor assessed this property.
Okay, so, okay, so. When I talked to Doug Shaw. He tells me he's not an appraiser, he's an assessor.
And that's true.
Okay, so why wasn't the property appraised?
Because by ordinance, we, we, the ordinance and the charter says we sell for fair market value. That's why it wasn't appraised, plus, there's no money in the budget for appraisals.
So, so that's fair market value, so we looked at other comps in the area, and that's a fair.
That's not fair market value. You, you talking again, appraisals, we talking about a municipal corporation where it serves better to be on the tax roll, out of our inventory.
I get that.
Okay, so, so we're not, we're not going, so we're not comparing. Appraisals and comps, because that's a whole different market. That's a private corporation versus municipal corporation.
You made the statement, you said it's better to have it off our, off, off our rolls and back onto the tax rolls.
Right.
This is a non.
And if you look at, if you look at the resolution, it states that there's no tax exemption on this lot.
There's no tax exemption on it.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, then. How about this? I'm willing. I'm willing to say yes. If I could get, and, and don't tell me that it can't be duh, because we do it all the time. If I could get a form of a deed restriction, I'd be more than w- willing to vote yes. I don't want this sold and then turned into something else later on down the line, okay? Everybody says, oh, they're going to do this and do that, and then they do something else, okay? And then his application says mixed use. What is mixed use?
That was, so they were first interested in two properties. So this one is for parking. If you continue to build, with the next lot, that would have been mixed use, but we took that off the table because we're just going to focus on this. And then when we come with the development plan, as far as what we looking to do up Sturtevant and up Leslie, then we'll revisit.
So there is a plan to develop something.
There's not a plan, there's been conversation. Not with just, not with just Hillen Springs, but as a whole, as a department, as a planning department.
I'm not being difficult, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with a lot on Hamilton. I'm sorry. Where does it end? It's just going to keep going.
Okay, Madam, um, thank you, sir. Madam Proton, did you have something that you wanted to add to this context?
So, just, just one quick second, please, I just want to, because he did sign a statement saying that intended use compliance. He did sign off on that, saying that it would be used for the intended use, which is the parking lot.
Okay.
So.
Then it should be no problem with a deed restriction then.
Just, that's a league.
If he.
Yeah, that's.
I would have to refer to the legal department.
Yeah, that, that's, that's one of those things that you can't, so.
Mr. Bosley, if he said that he would, he would keep his word to use in the property for what he wants it to be used for, then what would be the problem with a deed restriction?
Yeah, no, that's. Madam Proton?
Doug Shaw, the assessor, he has a formula. He, he came before council, we brought him before council, he did explain his process.
Yeah.
Okay.
He doesn't do comps, right?
No, he doesn't.
No, no, no.
That's, you know, appraisals, this is fair market value.
Something completely different. Ms. Manica, you have something that you wanted to add? I have a comment that I'd like to make too, as we go through this. Did you have something you wanted to add, Ms. Manica?
I do. So, here is, here's another big problem, an issue. It's not that city council doesn't want to see us move forward. Or see people get property or be able to develop. The issue comes in when. Things have not been really discussed, so maybe, this is a situation that in a workshop. The mayor. C E D. City council. And the. Bishop. Bishop, right? Would be able to sit down and have a conversation on how we can really purpose that whole area, considering the fact. Uh, when she came back earlier, discussing housing. Which is something that I've been saying for months, on months, on months, and now, in this situation, it comes back again. That, okay, now, when we mentioned the other parcels, oh, maybe we'll put housing there. But there's never been a clear understanding of discussion, so what happens is that we look like the bad people. And that's not really where it's at, we're not. It, but the oppression has been given that city council doesn't want this to happen. And I don't, I don't have a problem with a lot of things, what I do have a problem is play on words. And so when I say that, I, I mean. I, I know that people hear what we say, so then they come back to us and they repeat, or they change it, or they put it, and I'm saying that's not happening here. But I'm saying that if we could have a discussion first. About it, and that way too, we can assure that things like this don't happen, so again, that's where a workshop come in, that we discuss. You know, hey, let, let's talk to Bishop and say, hey, what about this? Have you thought about this? He has mixed use. They have a valid question about mixed use, because mixed use sounds like he should have a parking lot, he should have some stores, he should have also a living space. That's not, that is not possible, because it is, because I see it done. But when you use the word mixed use, it becomes different for different things, and so when you see council having an issue about mixed use. I don't want it to seem like, oh, well, oh, they don't know what they talking about. Because in some cases, we do. And we're asking that question. And so instead of addressing it and saying, hey, let's sit down at the table, we just keep getting hit with property after property, or people after people. C E D is bringing to us, and then it seems to be that, again, we're the bad people, we're not against you, Mr. Claiborne, we're not, we're not. What we're against is not doing things that's going to benefit the city in some cases. I can't speak for everything else that's happening, or nothing else, but I can't speak for this. And so I, I just want everybody, and I want you to understand that, it's nothing personal, it's nothing against that, it's just a fact.
I see you, Madam Proton.
Well, we ask those things, and we ask for a reason, I specifically ask for a reason, because I know what's going to happen in council chambers. And so to sit down would be a better scenario, and have that conversation before we get to council meeting, and have to do all of this extra rhetoric. And, and it's just not, it's just really not necessary. I, I, I can see the issue about the parking, after going over that other day, and I know about the white lanes, and I don't even know if we're going to keep bike lanes at this point. But I'm just saying, Carlton, I'm sorry, Mr. Claiborne, I just think, even listening to the mayor a little bit earlier. We have to figure this out, because if we don't get people. Then that water situation is not going to be due. If we don't get people in here, or entities to take up some of this slack. We still going to be paying. And I think everybody can relate to that and understand what I'm saying, so I hope I said it just, I'm seeing as long, but I, I, I tried to put it on there so everybody understands. So it might be a case, he's already asking for what, a deed restriction? Maybe we just need a workshops, and then right after the workshop, going into whatever, we're going to vote on. Just so that we can.
I see you, Madam Proton. I'm going to make a comment and I'll let you go. I see you, Ms. Martin. So, Ms., are you finished, Manica?
For right now, yes.
Okay, so let me go ahead and jump in too, because I am a dissenting point of view to my, to my esteemed members of Highland Park City Council. We are picking curtains and we haven't even purchased windows. We are, as a group, we are stagnating the process of growth in the city by splitting hairs on the early adopters. These are the people that are investing in the city when there's no other money here. We're having a discussion about real estate and what would prompt somebody to come to the city of Highland Park. Our dysfunction when it comes to dispersing small lots to organizations like this church that is a long time. That is a long time, um, custodian of goodwill in this city. They are a voting precinct. And here we are, we're splitting hairs with these people. They have been there for a very, very long time. I am going to put up something that I want you to see. This is Hamilton Avenue. Now, I'm born and raised in the city of Detroit. I go down Livinoy's on a regular basis. And to those of you who do not remember Livinoy, okay, if you don't remember Livinoy. Livinoy used to be an easy to navigate street. If you use Woodward Avenue in Ferndale, or you use Woodward Avenue in Royal Oak. Those, those businesses that are on that street, that main thoroughfare on Main Street, they all need, they must have parking lots. If you're talking about a fu- if you're talking about a real future, and not something that we're imagining in our own machinations. These, hold on a second. No, no, I'm saying, I'm, I, and that's not being disparaging, I'm just saying, we're imagining a different outcome than what is actually gonna come. In a perfect world where funds came to Highland Park, all of those businesses on Hamilton Avenue, this is from Landgrid. They all need parking, because if we had a smart bus running down Hamilton, if we had four lanes of traffic running down Hamilton. That means everybody, the funeral home, the gas station, the barber shop, the liquor store, they're not going to have places to park. Right now, we have a lane and a half with a bike lane. We have a lane and a half with a bike lane and no businesses. Think about that. We have a lane and a half with a bike lane with no businesses, and there are accidents on Hamilton. Every other week, there's a fender bender, there's a lane and a half, it's a dead street from six mile all the way down. To, to basically to Calvert, and there are no businesses. Imagine where the traffic is magnified times two. Times four, times ten, like it used to be when I was a busy street. Where splitting hairs, we should be aggressively trying to make sure that the businesses that are there. Including the nonprofits that are there, have adequate parking so that they can remain. When they tore Livinoy up. A dozen people, a dozen businesses went under, because there was no place for their people to park. They didn't have the luxury like they have in Woodward Avenue, of parking behind Woodward Avenue. We're talking about, this, this church is a member of the community. And every Sunday, just Easter Sunday, if you didn't drive up and, if you didn't see what it was like over there on Easter Sunday. Just for people coming home for Easter services. Imagine a wedding. Imagine a homegoing of somebody with more than three friends. All I'm saying is that, as we discuss, as we discuss these, th- this is a, this is another one. And I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just saying, I want us, the five of us who are making these decisions. We are making decisions ourself and nine other, nine other people. That's the way I make a decision every time I vote. What would I say versus nine other people sitting on my front porch, when it comes to the disposition of a piece of property? After three times coming here, after five or six months, after several years of trying to get a parking lot, I'm showing you on the screen. There's a parking lot in the front, they're trying to get a parking lot in the back. Just being on the zoning board, I'm telling you, they don't have enough parking. They don't have enough parking. And so, these residential lots that are owned by the city of Highland Park, Ms. Manica, you have made a, a point that I stand by. If you have a buildable lot, and Mr. Claiborne is on your side, if you have a buildable lot. It has to be discussed as a buildable lot. West of Hamilton is the most blighted area in the entire city, save that north of the city. So that means, we're, there, everybody is bending to us, and yet we're still threading them through a smaller and smaller needle. And, and, and members of city council, we are asking people to do things that we cannot do. We are asking people. We got three homeowners. We, we got people, we, we're asking them to do things we can't do. If I went and bought a lot, I couldn't pay seven thousand dollars for a privacy fence. Yes, ma'am. This is just my comment, like everybody else's.
But now, I, I, I'm gonna just reply, because if, if, if nobody else knows how long they've been here.
Yes, ma'am.
They, nobody else knows that. But, the question here stands. What's good for the city as a whole, as a whole? Nobody said no to the parking lot just yet, but you kept talking about business, uh, Mr. Thomas. And we're not talking about business, we're talking about.
Well, they work for God. I mean, they kinda are. They're bosses, they're bosses.
The state, the state treasurer did give us some money, right, to bring in a planning firm. And we have been aggressively moving on, putting a plan together to bring before council, which includes. Our housing, yeah, which, which includes what, what it looks like for housing. We're doing a housing readiness study. So a lot of work being done to prepare for that, to prepare for what it looks like, um, the type of houses, where to build houses. Where the businesses need to go. So all of that is being knocked out, and all of that's being taken into consideration. Also, we still operate under the master plan. Yes, we're looking to do some updates to bring before council, but all these things are taking place. So all the studies, everything taking place, when it's time to come before council, we'll go to the community, for the community engagement piece. All of those things will be discussed. But right now, we, we have a few things on the desk that I'm bringing before you. That's not gonna disrupt any other plans for the housing, for the businesses, for innovation districts, for all these different things. That the city of Highland Park can grow into. So it's not just being aimlessly like, I'm gonna get this person a lot, I'm gonna get this person, I'm gonna get this person a lot. All of these things are strategic. That's why they come in. Now, everybody gotta make an appointment to even talk about buying property. Because we're not taking people's money, and we're not gonna bring it before council. So before, where somebody come in, pay for application, I know that's a target development area, or I know we're not really selling one offs there. Then I'm not gonna take their money or their application, because we are putting together a plan. So it's not, it, it is, everything is being done with a plan.
Yeah, and so I just, thank you for responding. I want, I wanted to be clear, yes, just, Madam, I just wanted to be clear. I was offering context. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. I was just offering context, because I think it's important as we discuss it, not just for this item. But for other items moving forward, to make sure that we have the appropriate context around our discussion as we deliberate. Madam Protem, thank you for your patience. If you will go ahead.
Offer to purchase paper, and it says project name, Hillen Springs MBC Parking Lot. Project location, one two five two one Hamilton Avenue, and one two five three five Hamilton. And down here, it says, number of units, one each, mixed use, development cost, hundred thousand dollars.
So, previously, it was for two lots. Now it's just for one, which is the parking lot. The application and the resolution matches.
And then too, just for, this is the zoning map, and so RUV, Urban Village Residential is where that falls. So anything that falls in this area on the map would come in as mixed use development. That's just the way the nomenclature for it. So if you look on the screen right now, you'll see the zoning map for the city. I've highlighted the area in question. That tan section that you see is where the church would be, anything in that area would be mixed use, urban development. The red that you see would be mixed, is be Urban Village Mixed Use. So that is where the church is. So there are two, there are two Urban Village designations that are butt right up to each other. RUV, Urban Village Residential, and MUV, Urban Village Mixed Use. That is the nomenclature for the area. I will go back and put it up on the screen for the people at home. That area that's highlighted in red, all the way up and down all of Hamilton. That this entire area is, is designated the same in the master plan. Hamilton, all the way up, six mile, all the way down, with the exception of the Ashley Capital Site, which is industrial. The entire stretch of Hamilton Avenue will have the same designation, MUV, Urban Village Mixed Use. So all projects in that area will use that nomenclature. It doesn't mean anything other than that is the way that the master plan defines. Projects in that area. So, Ms. Martin, you had.
Yeah, so I only got a few questions for you, Claiborne. Um, so. Is it, can, can we make money, can the city make money off of parking lots? Okay.
And, and it, it relieves us from that water, um, deal.
Okay. Okay, so I'm just gonna say, one of my biggest concerns is, I, I don't want Hamilton to look like a bunch of parking lots.
Right.
I would say that would be my only concern, because that's what it looks like, that's what's going on right now. Um.
You said, that's what it looks like, that's going on. This was one, like, what, what other parking lots?
Like, there's lots, and there's like parking lots, like, Hamilton is really empty right now. That's what I'm saying.
Right, so now, like, like I said, so we.
Right, right, I got you. You said McKenna, you guys are making plans. Yeah, yeah, I got that. I'm just saying, that's just my only concern. I'm not saying it's gonna stay like that. Right, that's it. Okay. Um, and then you answered that question. Other than that, I don't have any other questions. I do have questions for, um, Pastor Franklin. Can he co- can you come up to the podium real quick? Okay, so my first question is, one, how would, how many members would you say you have currently?
I would say about five hundred.
Five hundred. How many can, um, Hillen Springs whole altogether?
How many capacity?
Correct.
Capacity about six hundred.
Six hundred. Oh, you're a hundred away from that. Okay, nice. What is lighting like over there?
Lighting?
The lighting.
Is, we, we light up our building from our parking lot that has, uh, lighting along, along the building, alley, all along. The perimeters of the building is lit up.
Okay.
But, you know, as, as you know, there's no street lights that's, um.
In that parking lot area. There's no street light.
No, we have, we have ample lighting in our lot.
Okay.
Yeah, two poles that give off, uh, plenty of light.
Okay, all right. And what are your hours?
Nine to five.
Only on Sunday?
No, every day.
Oh, every day, okay.
Except Saturday.
Except Saturday. Okay, and, um, you answered that question. How many of your members are here right now?
Want them to stand up?
No, yeah, go ahead. Well, hallelujah, okay. Nice, 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 okay. Thank you for that.
Keep your head in the hallway.
And, and you said, did you say there's someone in the hallway too?
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay, they can stay there. I, I got the gist of it from in here, thank you. Um, and then, that space, um, you, you get that, that, the one lot that you're asking for. My question is, my last question is, what kind of activities does a church do, you do? That you would change, you know, use the parking lot a little different, other than just parking?
Well, we're, we're doing, uh, community events, carnivals for kids during certain times of the year. We're doing back to school activities, we do. Bible school, uh, you know, we, we've hosted, uh, city, uh, health, health fairs and things of that nature. And so, we're always doing something that we don't have ample space. Because when we use the lot for the outdoor activities, now the people don't have.
Right, right, right.
And so, it's just, it's just on a given Sunday, if you ride by there, our lot is full, the street on both sides is full. You know, the alley, I mean, we're just capacitated, and we, we wouldn't be coming before this council. Asking for something that we didn't have the need for.
Right, I got that.
And our congregation is growing, and I'm just trying to accommodate, I mean, the needs of the growing congregation.
Are there any houses along Sturtevant? I, I don't remember that map that you showed me.
Sturtevant is very sparsely populated at the moment.
It is?
Very sparsely. Very sparsely, and very few. Very few.
Okay, so right now, you guys are parking along Hamilton, I'm assuming Sturtevant, right? You said across the street.
Yeah, both sides of the street.
And that's like about five hundred members if everybody show up on a great day.
Yeah, on a great day.
Okay, all right. I have no more questions.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull this up for Ms. Manica, she, and I'm gonna, then I'm gonna call for the vote on this item, because we have deliberated for quite some time on it. Ms. Manica, here's the images that you were asking for. Sturtevant is, Leslie is nearly, there's no population, and then we have one resident down here on the end of Sturtevant. So this area is ripe for development. The entire block is ripe for development. And I would encourage, um, well, let me.
Point of the church.
This is the church here. This is the church's current parking lot, and this is the proposed parking lot right here.
So again, I'm gonna ask you, see, could you tell me what was the other option? And then the, the other question where he said that he would make money on the taxes, right? So, what is the average amount a year, a tax that will come from having a parking lot? I mean, actually, it is, but what's the average amount coming from a lot?
Yeah, it's a measurement, it's a measurement. County will.
He had a mixed use, it parking, building, and house.
Will be the same. No, no, if, if you, if I'm making, if, if I'm making improvement on my property, it'll, it'll, they'll have to come out and they'll have to reassess it. And then they'll increase it by a percentage. It cannot be more than five percent annually.
I'm just throwing those questions out, because at the same time, that would actually be very beneficial to the church, actually. When they use the word mixed use. Even if the area is mixed use, that wasn't what the purpose is in the paper form. Mixed use was useful. So, I mean, it wasn't describing the area when we use the word mixed use. And, and what I'm doing is, I, I'm trying to clear up some things here. But also, it, the church was actually benefited. From having all three of those things versus just having a parking lot. And so would we, because it's going to be more taxes on that than it will be on just a parking lot. I want them to have, I probably, we might even have parking, I mean, busty things, uh, bike lanes on Hamilton. Because Hamilton needs to look different. And what Ms. Martin was speaking of was all the things that everybody that said yes to. And now they're, maybe you shaking your head no, but I don't think anybody here don't wanna give them that spot. I really don't. I just think that if we look at things strategically. You wanna park on, you wanna put a street in between their parking, when we could just open up their parking space. And probably even give them, uh, a lot on both sides, on both streets. I see what I'm seeing. And now they have a whole square. They don't have a square, a square, and then a street, then a square. They have a hole that they, if they choose to fence it in, that is all theirs, then they have it. It's just, to me, more strategic. So I don't know where we are, and everybody can't see what I'm saying. I see the faces in the audience. But right next to the church, there's a park, there's a lot.
You can't, we can't, ba- based on zone, and you can't vacate the alleys, you can't. The alleys cannot be vacated.
We vacated alleys before.
So, so, so this is, on, on Ham- on Hamilton Avenue, you have to be able to get a garbage truck back through here and a fire truck. You have to be able to get a garbage truck and a fire truck through here, based on zone. Yes, ma'am, you have to, off Hamilton Avenue. Off, off Hamilton Avenue.
Where we are, uh, requesting to put in, and build housing up.
Can you get into the church from there? On the, that side?
Yeah, on our side. And then we're looking at level of starting for residential housing.
So.
Also, also, when we first talked about the two lots, we talked about, I asked what were the priorities, he said parking lot. And then later down the line, we could discuss what we wanna, what it wanna look like up Sturtevant, up Leslie. With the maybe mixed use on Hamilton, and some other places on Hamilton. And residential, single family homes, Sturtevant, maybe mixed use on that. All of those things are being planned out and looked at.
Point of order, we've been on item, uh, six A for over thirty minutes. I'm gonna go ahead and call it a roll. I'll just go ahead and call it a roll. If, if we're gonna give it to them, we, we are, if we're not, we're not.
I'm ready.
Okay, so, um, for item six A, this is a resolution to sell the vacant commercial lot at one two five three five Hamilton Avenue. To the commercial property owner at one two six four seven Hamilton Avenue, Hillen Springs Missionary Baptist Church, a Michigan nonprofit. We have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Martin, supported by the chair. Would you go ahead and call it a roll on item six A?
Councilman Shafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Y'all funny.
I'm gonna say yes.
Councilperson Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion there. That's Ms. Manica, I'm gonna turn the floor, because you did that grit, grit in your teeth, so I'm gonna make sure I leave some time for you.
Before we even go to the next one?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna say this right now. Please listen. If paperwork doesn't come to this table, correct, it's not gonna be, at least for me, because this is not a consistent thing. And so all the questions that are other councils asking, or the things that they're saying, if we just do it right and, and redo it, it wouldn't be nothing to just redo it and take off that lot. You know what I mean? And so.
Here, here.
I just think that we cannot continue in this manner, because right now it is two, but what we understand, it's only one, right?
Application says one. The resolution says one, the application says one.
They're looking at something?
I don't know what they're looking at.
This is, and she ready to.
Okay.
So the best thing to do is to make the paperwork right. And then you won't have a thirty minute conversation, Carl.
Okay, moving on to item six B, this is a tabled item, it was tabled, the resolution to sell three vacant residential lots at sixty nine Kendall Street, seventy three Kendall Street, seventy nine Kendall Street, to the property owner at sixty six Kendall Street, seventy four and seventy seven Kendall Street. That's the Greater Philadelphia Tabernacle Church, a Michigan nonprofit. City Council, what is your pleasure on this tabled item?
We move to approve.
Do you have to remove it? I bring it back from the table first.
Oh, I'm sorry. We move to we move to bring back from the table, resolutions to sell three vacant residential lots at sixty nine Kendall Street, seventy three Kendall Street, and seventy nine Kendall Street, to the property owners of seventy four Kendall Street, sixty six Kendall Street, seventy seven Kendall Street, and one four oh two seven Lincoln, Greater Philadelphia Tabernacle Church, and Michigan Nonprofit Corporation.
So we have, we have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Manica, second by Councilwoman Martin. Uh, Madam Proton, I, I can get you on the next one here, but this is to bring the item back from the table. Questions, concerns, dissent, otherwise we'll take a roll call vote and get it off, get it back on the table.
Yeah, yeah, I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we're only voting on sixty six Kendall Street?
Right now, we're voting just to take it off the table.
No, no, I know.
Yeah, we're gonna take.
I got that.
Yeah, we're gonna take it off the table, and then you can make a motion to amend.
Okay. I wanna make a motion to amend.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, we got a motion to take it off the table. You provided a second. Would you call to roll on, yeah, would you call to roll on bringing back the table item? Item six B, the resolution to sell three, three vacant residential lots on Kendall Street.
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes, to bring back from the table.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes, to take it off the table.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, the item is off the table now. City Council, now the chair will be willing to entertain.
I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution to sell the three vacant residential lots at sixty nine Kendall Street, seventy three Kendall Street, seventy nine Kendall Street, to the property owners of seventy four Kendall Street, sixty six Kendall Street, seventy seven Kendall Street, and one four zero two seven Lincoln, Greater Phila- Philadelphia Tabernacle Church.
So let me help you with that, because you, what you're saying is you wanna make a motion to approve the sale of the vacant lots, but you wanna amend this resolution, am I correct?
Right, wasn't it said that only, we're only voting on sixty six Kendall Street?
So I wanna make sure.
So don't we have to make an amendment?
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the resolution to sell vacant residential lots to the property owner at sixty six, seventy four, and seventy seven Kendall. And so, and the chair will offer support, and that modification would be, ma'am, if you would spell it out, for just sixty nine Kendall?
Right.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is a resolution to sell the vacant residential lot at sixty nine Kendall to the property owners of sixty six, seventy four, and seventy seven Kendall. That motion was made by Council, Councilwoman Martin, and it was supported by the chair. Questions, concern, or dissent, can we take a roll call and get a vote on it? Hearing none, go ahead, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll on the resolution to sell the vacant residential lot at sixty nine Kendall to the property owners of sixty six, seventy four, and seventy seven Kendall?
Councilman Ashafi?
I'm gonna say yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes, to amend.
Yes, to approve the sale, until amend.
So I thought we were making a motion on the amend, amendment.
That motion was, that, if I, was I wrong that you were making a motion to approve the sale, or just to amend it? Because by making.
Making a motion to amend it.
So by, the only way we do that, so right now it says, we approve the agenda. So you can make a motion to approve the resolution of the sale of one lot. In your motion, you made that clear, you wanted to amend it, only to include one property.
Correct.
Yes, so right now we're approving that motion just for sixty nine Kendall.
Okay.
So, I, your vote again?
I said, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. So, that is taken care of, and just as we are on these tabled items in CED, I concur with Councilwoman Manica. A lot of the frustrations that we experience up here is the fact that we are held to the highest standard. They're putting our names on these resolutions. If it is wrong, the burden of responsibility is on us. So I understand her concern, because it'll go on the record, the resolution is how a council speaks. So if the resolution is not correct, if the information that's in front of us is not correct, it's incumbent upon us as members of the city council to ensure that that is correct. And I wanna make it clear, my desire to look out for the people who have been keeping this city alive is not superseded by the um, by a desire to cut corners. So Ms. Manica is absolutely one thousand percent correct. And her demand that the documents that come before us be complete, be accurate, and be correct, because it's our names that are on those documents moving forward, so I completely. Okay, all right, so moving on to item seven of the administration, this is the resolution to accept the donations of water that were given to the city of Highland Park. For the people in the audience who don't know, we cannot accept any kind of donations without the approval of city council. And during the water crisis, if you will, there were a lot of people that came forward that gave us pallets of water, and some people, grandmama just came down, he had two or three gallons of water. And we can't accept it unless we get approval for it. So the resolution says, whereas on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, the city experiences second low water pressure resulting in a need for a boil water alert. And whereas the mayor of the city of Highland Park asked citizens and local businesses to make bottled water donations during the boil water emergency, which was also issued on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. And whereas, according to section two four six zero four of the city of Highland Park ordinance, mayors, may exercises emergency power and authority specified in this section. Whenever a situation requires, or is likely to require, that the mayor invokes such power and authority, he or she shall, as soon as reasonably expedient, convene city coun- council to perform its legislative and administrative duties as the situation demands, and shall report to that body relative to emergency activities. And whereas, multiple citizens and business respond to the requests of the mayor with sizable donations of drinking water to our community, in which we are grateful. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Highland Park, city council accepts the donations from the following donors attached to this resolution, and a letter of thank you will be sent out from the city of Highland Park. And those donators are Aldi, the Pepsi Corporation, Glory Supermarket, Thomas Hardeman, Mike Curris, Troy Towing, uh, Cora Wilkinson Senior, Trevor Gordon, of, of the, of the Order of Eastern Stars, Greater Saint Matthews, Missionary Baptist Church, to order the Eastern Star Youth Paternity, Eastlake Wine and Spirit Company, and Carolyn Walker. Those are the people who made donations to us.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So that is the resolution that is before us right now. City Council, what is your pleasure on item seven? The resolution to accept.
I move to approve the resolution for acceptance of donations of water.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Manica, the chair will offer support. Questions, concerns, otherwise we'll take a roll call vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll on item seven?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to the last item on our agenda under legal, there are three things here, this is a resolution to retain Jacob Damer, P.C. on the matter of the Woolwood Manchester LLC versus the city of Highland Park. City Council, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi, second was made by? Ms. Manica? Would you call to roll on item uh eight, please, under legal, eight A? Yes, ma'am, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Are you allowed to explain what this is to the audience, or?
I, I wouldn't wanna go into it in any detail in an open session.
So if you would call to roll on item eight, under legal?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item eight B, this is the budget public hearing scheduled for May fifth. So we need to, I, I would entertain a motion to hold a public hearing for the budget.
So moved.
We have a motion made by Councilwoman Manica to hold a public hearing for the budget scheduled for May fifth, twenty twenty five. That motion was made by Councilwoman Manica, seconded by Councilman Ashafi. Would you call to roll on item A B?
You got a question.
I'm sorry, question, Ms. uh, Madam Proton, go ahead. The pu- the public hearing is during the meeting, regular seven, at seven P.M.
What date?
On May fifth.
On the fifth.
Monday.
Did you call to roll now, ma'am?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries.
At seven P.M., right?
Seven P.M., during the regular scheduled meeting. Up under item eight. See, this is a, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to hold a public hearing on the uh water prices, the water rates.
So moved.
So we have a motion made by Councilman Ashafi to hold a public hearing on May fifth, twenty twenty five for the water rates from the Water Department. The chair will offer support. It will also be held at seven P.M. If you, we have questions, concerns, dissent, otherwise we'll take a roll call vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please go ahead for a roll call vote on item H C?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, it is eight forty one, we have covered our normal agenda. We are gonna go into a session of citizens' participation, and we will have council affairs today. I will ask, this is me leaning on the audience. Our meetings are so much more productive when those chairs are filled. There is something about an audience that makes this process that much better. It is very difficult to explain to people at home what happens in city council unless they're there. So I would just like to thank all the people who are here now. I would please, I would beg you to stay to the end of council affairs, our colleagues here. This is the only opportunity where they have a chance to discuss things that they're choosing. As long as we're not running for office, we can discuss whatever we want. And so I will, I'm gonna set my clock here for two minutes, which in Highland Park is two minutes and thirty seconds. And I will turn the floor over to this young lady. And uh, once you give us your name, we'll go ahead and start the clock.
Good evening, my name is Renee Ford, to the council and the audience. Uh, my concern is, um, it's directed to Keshi. I was very appalled at the last TV interview you did concerning our police department. You're representing my district, which is District Three. And when you have a personal feeling about the police department, I feel personally, it should not have been made public. That's my concern. Also, when you do something like that, it makes the whole city look bad. Not just you or what they did to you, it makes people on the outside feel that our police department is very incompetent. And I am here to stand to say that they have been doing a wonderful job, and I would like to thank them. Also, I would like to take a congratulations to Keshi Springs on finally getting the lot, you appreciate it. But I would also like to see some of you guys come to more of these city council meetings. Those that live in Highland Park, because I've been here every council meeting.
You are.
And I'm, I'm not representing myself, I'm representing your church. I'm representing everybody, because I feel as what Keshi did was very impolite and very rude. And I think he needs to apologize and step down.
Okay, ma'am, thank you very much. How are you, sir? Come on forward.
Good evening to this extreme ci- city council, President Thomas, President Proton Robinson, to the citizens of Highland Park. Uh, I am Robert Douglas Laas Junior, two thirteen East Grand. I am excited about the fact that the May fifth meeting is going to be public pertaining to the budget. I am asking that the best practices I put forth so that eternal controls, policy procedures, that the transparency and the accountability of the budget be put forth, that we as citizens can see every item, every line item where the money is going for this city and the administration. So I would like to see the, the um mayor's pay rate, I would like to see uh, they're assisting every individual who holds a position in this city. We need to know what they're making and where the money is going. Every dime needs to be accounted for. I believe that we deserve transparency, and I don't want to uh take up too much more of your time. But I do wanna also say, oh, now that I'm back in the city, the water rates are just yeah, it's, it, it, it is a hard, it is hard to s- see how people can go forward in this city. And so we thank God for long time residents, and we thank God for long times entities as Healing Springs, because even though I'm not a current member, I am a son of Highland, uh, Healing Springs in the city of Highland Park that pastor's father launched my ministry. And so we're thankful for this extreme council going forth and releasing the land. Thank you so much for your time.
Evening, ma'am, I'll start your time, once you give us your name.
Hello, Carla Oliver. Um, just wanna make three points, I'm gonna go very quickly. Uh, the water bill on taxes is consciously unfair. Uh, especially with bills that are not accurate are over sixty percent higher for charges not coming from Gleewa. Um, as well as negotiations and unfair rates that are astronomically low for certain businesses. Number two, residential streets like East Grand do not need to be rezoned from residential to commercial streets. Um, it creates room for more traffic, can create more accidents, crime, and liability. So it should be a no-go. Most of those, most is still houses and apartments on, on that street um, in between Woolwood and Janar. Uh, if you, number three, if you notice, the inner cities and urban areas seem to have the most liquor stores and strip clubs and now marijuana shops. We don't need that here. We don't need another liquor store, another, another strip club, or another marijuana shop, not any marijuana shop. The city does not need, because it creates the same things I just mentioned, and moving from residential to commercial, commercial streets. We don't need that crime, we don't need that liability, we don't need that flow of traffic. There's other ways to make money. All money is not good money. Think outside the box for, for further development, other than those things that are negatively stereotyped for inner cities. That's all.
All right, I just wanted to come back and say thank you so much for approving, even though it was one single lot, we appreciate it. Seventy four Kendall, most people know us as the church that collapsed in. Well, we finally got our permit, and we will start building, you know, breaking ground to build in the next couple of weeks. I wanted y'all to know, because I know when you drive by there, somebody sees, it's like, what are they doing? We were held up when you, I don't, I'm not gonna say you, when the city of Highland Park transitioned from one engineering company to another. We had to start all over, so that's what held us up. But thank God, we are moving forward. I just wanted to let y'all know.
Hi. I'm a board, my name is Jamil Edwards, I live on East Grand, and I too want to ask, the two times our water was turned off, no one told us, what were they testing? And they didn't ever give us the outcome of what they tested in our waters. We always ask people to donate, but the residents should know, what were you testing? Why did I, why was our water low, low, excuse me? Uh, is there any way we can get an answer to that? And then I did, um, I wanted, one more question was, what's local street in Highland Park has half a major road and half a local road? The answer is East Grand.
Pastor Patrick Franklin, Pastor Hilling Spring Baptist Church, I'm coming back before you to say thank you to this council, to this esteemed council for, um, approving the purchase of the lot at twelve, five, thirty-five Hamilton. Thank you very much.
I don't see anybody moving towards the podium, so I'm going to move over into council affairs, starting with the gentleman from the third district.
Good evening, H P.
Good evening.
So, I'm gonna say very quickly, for those who can't see this for what it is, that's your fault, not mine's. But let me make it clear. In case you forgot who I was, in case you don't recognize who I am, in case you don't see the rage behind the face that you're looking at here. You want me to move? You want me to step down? Make me step down. I'm here, I'm not here for a popularity contest. I don't give two shits if a person likes me or doesn't like me. I'm here to make sure that you survive and you get what you need. Now granted, the news hasn't been pretty, but anybody who can't see this for the setup that it is, is a flipping idiot. It is what it is, and if you can't see it, that's not my fault, that's yours. Okay? Anybody who got a problem with me, tough. You want me to move? Come move me. I'm sitting right here. And I'm gonna be here until my term is up. Or until the Lord calls me back, one of the two. So anybody that don't like Keshi the Shafi, that's just tough titties for you. Deal with it. Okay? And just for the record, for every action, there's a consequence. And for those of you who know this, Jim and I sitting up here, you know they can do nothing but pour gasoline on an already enraged inferno. Revenge is a dish best served cold, and I love a good fucking fight. So pardon my language, and you all have a good evening.
Thank you very much, sir, uh, Ms. Martin.
Hello, great evening. First off, I want to start off saying congratulations on getting that lot for the, the extension of the parking lot. Congratulations and welcome that the, all the members came. That was, that's exactly what a community looks like. And I'm glad that all the members came and you even had some people in the hallway. I love to see that, I want to see more of that in Highland Park. I don't know how many of your members actually live in Highland Park, but it was nice to see that we need to get back to community. I would even love to see the members to start talking to some of the other and get that six hundred members that you can hold. The next thing I don't want to also address is, I don't know if any of you guys filled this out or if you've seen this, this is the public survey. Um, I'm going to ask that some of you fill it out, there's a Q R code. Um, what streets or things that you want us to focus on in Highland Park? You know, where do you want this grant money to go into Highland Park on your streets, your, your residents? Yeah, check this out, fill that out and let's get a, so we can know where we want to focus on in Highland Park. Next thing I want to say is, um, I don't even know who we're supposed to talk to administration, but can we get some, I know, um, Ferndale has like meters, like parking meters. Can we get meters in front of that methadone clinic? Like, I mean, they stay there, like, I mean, I don't, I, I don't know what there is to state it, but we can't get like no meters, parking meters there? You know, that would have some revenue coming in, you know, in the city, can we get that? Can we also get a roundabout? Who do we talk to about getting a roundabout at Puritan and Hamilton? So we don't have all those accidents that's going on, it's going to slow traffic down, especially if we want to see Hamilton be, um, business district. If we want that, can we do that for safety issues? On that note, I must say, thank you, thank you for coming out, love all of you. And I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Manica.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. So, congratulations. I do want us to still talk and have conversations about the ability of growing and growing in a way that it not only assists the church, but that it assists the, the city as well and the citizens. Hopefully to bring in more citizens here and maybe also to your church as well. Um, also look forward coming in May, um, Health Equity Resource Fair for the third year in a row um, that I've had at the Justice Center on Hamilton. Uh, and so hopefully it'd be even bigger, every year it seems to get bigger and better, so we're hoping for that. Uh, also, I'd like to say, I might have to go and, and do my council affairs earlier than Ms. Martin, so she won't give away all the things I'm going to say already. So earlier I also mentioned to you about the Q R code. So it should be out there circulating, no, I put one out there earlier. Somebody might have just took the whole thing, but it was out there to circulate the Q R code. Everybody don't like writing right now and it's late in the evening, so doing a Q R code might be a better scenario. But please do that because it, it only helps us to understand and the engineers to understand what's happening. I heard a statement about, we have a new engineering company, actually it's just a planning company. We still have the same engineering company that we had, uh, previously. Also on zoning, I know that everyone comes here in regards to the zoning or the construction of a street. But as we say, we like to have citizens come in and talk to us and we'd be able to talk to you as well. That should also be happening at your zoning board meetings, at your planning meetings, at your block club meetings, at the police commissioner meet, or is that the right meeting? Uh, is it police commissioner or just the meet with the chief? Chat with the chief, just like you show up here or you showing up here. And some of the issues, and I, and I really try and explain this, some of the issues that you bring to us, they fall under those other juridic jurisdictions. But if you never go to them, it, it kind of doesn't matter, because then they don't hear. That's what they sit on their boards for. School board, all of those things, seems like we get it all, we get every single piece. But if you don't go to those other boards, all those commissioners that sit on those other boards, they have a responsibility to you as well, to hear what you're saying, to get your roundabout. So I have talked to the engineers, Ms. Martin, and so that's kind of who you talk to, they do, engineers. Yes, so what they, they've already had that request though, that's what I'm letting you know, so they have to look at it. But right now, our concern, my understanding, and they can later correct that, our concern right now is our infrastructure to do whatever we need to do, what, what responsibilities we have now. But they are looking at all kind of ways to make our walkways safer, our areas safer, is it our street safe? Um, so those are things. Of course, I've mentioned parking meters before, tons and tons of times. I'm going to keep mentioning it because I want a parking structure too. That's consistent money, I don't care how small it is, it's consistent. And those things can be changed. We are here to make, we're legislation. That's the part that we really have to get across and that we really have to start working on ourselves as well. So again, I thank you guys, just look forward to a Community Assistance Day coming. Uh, I don't know what date it is yet, so hopefully by next council meeting I'll be able to, so just look for it out there. If you know what a Community Assistance Day is, it is not handing you out a flyer. It is actually servicing you on the spot if you need some help. So remember too, that the water company has thought that comes to, to the water company and said to give you some assistance, but in a Community Assistance Day, you have like Wayne Metro, et cetera, et cetera, that will actually offer assistance on that day as well as a resource, uh, a resource Health Equity Fair. Last year we did immunizations for children, year before that, it was for children and adults. Uh, we're not sure what we're going to do, we're hoping for some actual, um, mammogram testing and maybe even some other testing that comes mobile, not sure yet. So just be on the look for those things. And everybody, thank you for coming and remember, we do have other boards in the city that represent you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Will we go on to the Councilperson Robinson?
And God bless all the pastors, especially mine that's in the audience today. God bless you all. And I just want to speak on the phone calls that I received myself in regards to the language and the way that some officers speak to the city. I told them to record it, take pictures, get their bags now, because I can't do anything unless I'm, I have. And also, last year I think it was Keshi and I met with the chief at their false office on Grant and Woolwood, and we talked about these things and the conditions at the jail over there on Glory's parking lot. So we have spoken to the chief about this thing. And with that being said, um, we've just got to do better. I don't know what to say, but keep praying. Love you, have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll get this done in like two minutes. This past weekend, as always in my life, has been a very interesting weekend. Only Muslims in our family, in my immediate family of my brother, of my father's, nine brothers and sisters. There were two, two of my grandfather's sons who had, who were Muslim. And my grandfather was a pastor, so Easter Sunday was always interesting for me because as Muslim children growing up in the city of Detroit, we were encouraged to go to Easter Sunday for, for a number of reasons. One, it was going to be food, definitely going to be food. And everybody that we knew from school was going to be there, but I was always fascinated with the sermon. And the, the, the notion that, that so I'm, I'm a scientist, energy cannot be created or destroyed. So the imagining that, um, that God could be put down in human form is something that never really registered in my mind. The more chemistry I studied, the more that I was absolutely sure that there was God. The more I understood about science, I mean, the more I understood about a molecule, the more I understood that, that the presence of God. The most fascinating story after Easter was the story of Barabbas and Jesus and Pontius Pilate. I could not have believed that as a child, that the people had a choice, they had their Messiah right within their midst. And that they chose to kill him. They had a man who caused a riot in the city, who was known for these crimes, and they enjoyed his company so much that they said, we want to hang out with him. And they sent their Messiah to his death, which I found very fascinating. It's like that. And I, I'm using that example is because those people sitting in the audience, sometimes you look at us and you say, it's that council's fault, it's those people's fault. It's y'all's fault, you're doing these things to us, and I will assure you that we're actually not. It's the chair that we sit in that is the seat of power and we're forced to. If we're going to be honest, we're forced to hold ourselves to a higher standard. That means sometimes disagreeing with things that in our heart, we might say, oh, I would like to do that, but we know structurally that we can't do those things. So I want to just raise that concern, I mean, just, just to raise it as a point of discussion that sometimes, um, we have the best intentions, but due to the framework, we have to take positions. These are the people I agree with and the people that I disagree with. And that, and no matter what the subject is, and the, the subject that I really want to talk about is, is housing. So I can speak personally, I invested in Highland Park long before I became a public official. I bought Liberty School in twenty nineteen with great hopes of investing back in the city. I lived here my whole life and I can tell you personally that I am tens of thousands of dollars in the hole. I have a astronomically large phantom in my mind, water runoff bill that has been assessed to me and nothing to prove that it's actually valid. And I'm still trying to work on a development that I'm certain is going to cost me twenty-five or thirty million dollars. And as somebody who lives here, whose family lives here, I can tell you firsthand, as somebody who wants to be a developer, you're not a developer until you finish. Building anything in the city of Highland Park is an, is an immense challenge because our citizens, our city council, myself included, we don't have the background knowledge that the developers in the city of Detroit have, nor do we have the financial interest in our city. We are poor people again, we are picking out curtains and we don't have windows. So it's very, very important for me. I am going to put two things on the screen, I'm almost done, but it's important to do the whole screen. I'm gonna put two things on the screen and I want you to understand where we coming from. So I did a search on Gen Z housing crisis, Gen Z, those people in their middle twenties, all the way down until their teens, they're never going to be able to own a home. These are the people in your family, your young people, they're never going to be able to put twenty percent down on the average home in America is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, that's across the country. They're never going to be able to do it. There are houses in Highland Park that we know that are going for over a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Okay? Why can't today's young people lead a nest? Blame it on high housing costs. This is an article for Detroit, without affordable housing, some Detroit, Detroiters struggle and lose stable housing. Last one, Detroit's affordable housing isn't affordable for the average Detroiter. Building housing in this area in southeastern Michigan, south to Eight Mile, east to Telegraph, is extremely difficult because whose money is it? Whose money is it? What bank is going to finance a development in our community? Look at us, not making a, look at us, we regular blue collar folk, they don't see an upside on it. So we have to actually take the initiative and encourage the little people. We have to give the little people an opportunity to make the city viable because before they were developing down by the train station, all they had in Cork Town was guess what? Gardens and green spaces and bike lanes, people wearing flip flops, checker shirts. And now it's one of the hottest areas in southeastern Michigan. So I just wanted to make sure that we have that conversation. We can't do our job unless we have an audience like we have tonight. The more the merrier, the more people we get here, the better. And the last thing is, as a high school chemistry teacher, I'm going to encourage all of you, we young people, please talk to the young people in your family about seeking out jobs in the skilled trades. There's a tremendous opportunity for them. I'm talking to a guy with ten years of college and I'm telling all of my students, forgo college right now. Get in the skilled trades program, we need electricians, we need carpenters, we need, we are desperate for welders. I drive past the Gordy Howard Bridge every day and there's not enough welders up there, we don't have enough electricians. And I don't want them to incur the same type of debt that I did. So if you have young people in your family, as we get close to the end of the school year, I know you're having parties and you want to send them off to college, consider sending them to the Detroit Training Center, to one of the community college, uh, community colleges that are available and encourage them to get involved in the skilled trades. That's my two cents, having covered all the business of the city of Highland Park, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, meeting adjourned nine oh seven, thank you.